Good afternoon. I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission of June 5, 2024. A printed agenda is available outside of the hearing room and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, is available online or at the Planning Department, Room 213. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. If you have parked in the parking lot across the street to the north, the gate is open and no parking coupons are needed today. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, commissioners and the staff, cell phones may not be used in this chamber during any portion of today's meeting. We appreciate your cooperation. Please note, the Planning Commission action today is final on the following items. 1.3, Special Permit 418B. 4.2, Special Permit 1713D. 4.3, Special Permit 24020. And 4.4, Preliminary Plat 24003. Any aggrieved person may appeal final action of the Planning Commission to the City Council or the County Board by filing a notice of appeal with the clerk within 14 days following the action of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission action on all of today's items is a recommendation to the City Council or the County Board. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting that was held May 22, 2024.
So move, Campbell.
Second, Joy.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Byatt?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Minutes approved.
We will now proceed with today's agenda. The next item of business is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be called at the same time and will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing, unless there is a request from someone wishing to speak or at the request of a commission member. I will ask Shelley to read all the consent agenda items into the record. Once those items are read, she will ask if there is anyone wishing to speak. If you wish to speak on an item that is on the consent agenda, we would ask that you stand and state that item. That item will then be removed from the consent agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing under Section 3 of today's agenda. All items remaining on the consent agenda will be voted upon in total with a motion for approval. Shelley, will you please call the items on the consent agenda?
Item 1.1, Conference of Plan Conformance 24015. To review asking conformance with the 2050 Lincoln Lancaster County Conference of Plan Amendment to the Fiscal Year 2223 through 202728 Capital Improvement Program to add the Bethany Land Purchase 1700 North Cottner Boulevard Project to allow for the purchase of property generally located at 1700 North Cottner Boulevard. Item 1.2, Change of Zone 24014 from AG Agricultural to I1 Industrial on property generally located at 8401 North Sumy Street. Item 1.3, Special Permit 418B to amend the existing Southwood First Edition Community Unit Plan with associated waivers to reduce the front yard setback along South 27th Street to 18 feet at 4830 Canterbury Lane to allow accessory structures to occupy up to 40% of the front yard setback on multiple lots on property generally located on the west side of South 27th Street between Nebraska Parkway and Old Cheney Road, and this is final action. Are there any expertise communications to be disclosed on these items?
No.
Are there any expertise communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting these sites to be disclosed?
No.
If there is anyone wishing to speak on these consent agenda items, please stand and state the item.
Okay, if there is no one who wishes to speak on the consent agenda items, we will then entertain a motion for approval.
I would move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second, Joy.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Byatt?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Consent agenda approved, seven to zero.
I will now ask Shelley to call the request for deferral.
We have received written requests from the applicant for a deferral for continued public hearing action to the June 26, 2024 Planning Commission hearing for related items 5.1A through 5.1D, which is Annexation 24001, CPA 24001, Change of Zone 24001, and UP 24001. These items are in regard to the Firefox property, which is generally located in the northeast corner of South 84th and Van Doren Streets.
We entertain a motion for deferral for items 5.1A through item 5.1D.
So move, Campbell.
Second, Joy.
Yeah, oh, go ahead.
I was gonna say, to the June 26 Planning Commission hearing.
Correct.
Just to make sure we had that in the record.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Byatt?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
And I know Steve asked prior to the meeting starting, but is there anyone here who wishes to speak on those applications today? Okay. We will now proceed to public hearing. Prior to staff making a brief presentation, each staff person should state their name, agency, and address. The applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony, and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. If during your testimony you have copies of documents or materials you would like distributed to the Planning Commission members and/or included as a part of the record, please provide them to the clerk. Each person testifying should state their name and address and shall have five minutes to speak, unless additional time is requested and granted. The clerk will use the light system to help aid your timing for your testimony. The lights will appear on the monitors in front of you. The clerk will indicate when you have one minute remaining to wrap up your testimony. The red light indicates that your five minutes has expired. Once the final minute has lapsed, the clerk will indicate that your time is up. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing, unless the commission votes to defer action or to continue the public hearing. Shelley, please call the first public hearing item.
Yes, item 4.1, Change of Zone 24013 from R4 Residential to H3 Highway Commercial, which is on property generally located at the Northwest 9th and West Saunders Avenue. Are there any expertise communications to be disclosed on this application?
No.
Are there any expertise communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting this site to be disclosed?
No.
Good afternoon, Emma Martin, 555 South 10th Street. This is our request for a change of zone from R4 Residential to H3 Highway Commercial for approximately one acre of land, generally located at Northwest 9th Street and West Saunders Avenue. The property was sold to the current owner in 1990 as surplus property by the city and has been rezoned, and was rezoned to R4 prior to the sale being finalized. This rezoning was done to encourage less intensive uses along West Cornhusker Highway and that entryway corridor along here. And the owner, the owner applied for a street and alley vacation in 2020 to vacate a very small portion of West Saunders right-of-way, and the vacation was approved. This right-of-way was here. During the 2020 street and alley vacation application, the owner expressed interest in rezoning the property from R4 to H3. During that discussion, it was noted that the rezoning the property without conditions to address the impact of the commercial zoning would, what impact the commercial zoning would have on residential uses surrounding the property was inappropriate. Any change of zone that allows more commercial development along West Cornhusker Highway and that entryway corridor should address the impact on the neighboring residential uses, including by providing such solutions, including reduced connections to Cornhusker Highway, enhanced greening along the highway, and the paving of adjacent streets, which are currently dirt and gravel. No agreement was reached at that time regarding those required improvements, and in 2020, the owner did not apply for a change of zone either. The conditions that were appropriate in 2020 are still appropriate today. Without a zoning agreement, a change of zone to commercial is inappropriate on this property because H3 zoning allows a broad range of intensive commercial land uses, including car sales and repairs, retail sales, restaurants, and contractor services. A straight rezon would allow commercial traffic to come to the site along residential streets, specifically along Northwest 9th Street to West Saunders Avenue, and from West Dawes Avenue along Northwest 10th Street. As there is no connection to Cornhusker Highway from this property specifically, as that access to that highway was relinquished with the purchase of the property. This access would also be taken from the unpaved roads, as there would be no agreement to improve the existing condition of the roads. All of this would have a significant impact on the adjacent residential uses. There are currently five residential properties or residential uses that look directly onto the property. This, these three, and then these two, though they are in H3, are used as residences. Not to mention the impact it would have on the neighboring, the residential uses in the neighborhood further back. When this application came in, the Planning Department offered to meet with the applicant and the owner to go over these issues and find solutions. The owner decided to move forward without, with the application without a meeting. And in other change of zone applications throughout the city, the applicants work with the city to identify similar issues as well as solutions and determine what the required improvements would be. The rezoning of this property isn't appropriate without addressing the impact of the change, and for these reasons, the Planning Department is recommending denial of this request.
Questions at this time? No, I'm sure we'll have some later. Thank you. All right, well, here, testimony from the applicant.
Good afternoon, Nate Burnett, Reg Engineering, 601 Old Cheney Road, Suite A. This is kind of a unique application before you guys today. Typically, we're here with a recommendation for approval or a conditional approval. As Emma did say, there is some history with this property, and Mark, who's our client, has owned it since he bought it with the surplus. As Emma stated, it is currently zoned R4. We are requesting the H3 zoning. And typically, when we request the rezon, it's because of contiguous zoning and just, so here's kind of that highway corridor. So along Cornhusker, here's our parcel. Everything, basically, three-quarters of a mile west and three-quarters of a mile east is H3 zoning. The one exception to that would be further to the east over by I-180, which is R3 on the north side of Cornhusker. A blow-up of that is here, and that is a mobile home court. And so, you know, from our standpoint, in the staff report, it talks about this entry corridor from the interstate along Cornhusker. So we have H3 basically along the entire length, other than a trailer court. And so with R4, we believe, hey, if we want urban residential, we can put up a trailer court. We believe it's already properly zoned for that. Or we can do something that is contiguous to the other parcels along Cornhusker. Some other unique challenges to this property that have been previously discussed with staff is that there's a sanitary sewer that runs through this eight-inch main. So there's an easement over that. We did a rough overlay of what R4 setbacks would be on the property with that existing sanitary sewer easement. And so, as you can see with that easement coming through here, it kind of goes cattywampus, and it's not really clear-cut through that property. That really just leaves, let's see if I can zoom in here. That really just leaves a little bit of the property that's actually buildable. And so what we would like to do with the H4 zoning request is, let me see here. There's multiple properties there and multiple parcels. And so we're seeking the change of zone, knowing that in order to get a building permit, we're gonna have to probably do a consolidation plat. We don't want to do the consolidation plat first because of the issue with the change of zone. And so you can see that there's remaining portions of the property as well as vacated right-of-way. And so in order to kind of clean up this parcel, we're coming before you today to get that change of zone request, then kind of have an idea of what we would like to do, which currently the thought is self-storage. And Mark had done the self-storage across the street right here. And so with that consolidation plat, we believe that some of the items that Planning has said, you know, regarding potentially paving of roads, that can come up during a final plat. We don't want to get to that point unless we can have an idea on the change of zone. This exhibit kind of highlights these red hatches. Since we've turned in the request, Mark has gone to the abutting neighbors, and we have several letters from them recommending approval of this request to go from H, or from R4 to H3. And so I can provide those letters and this exhibit. The only one that we weren't able to get was this parcel. They weren't necessarily opposed to it, they just had some questions. It should be also worth noting that they are a renter. And so basically, everybody that abuts our property is in favor of this change of zone from R4 to H3. They actually welcomed the thought of kind of having that commercial to buffer from the highway traffic. Previous attempts, as Emma mentioned in 2020, they had recommended maybe going with more of an urban residential feel. Mark reached out to both Habitat for Humanity as well as Neighbor Works, and they said that they would not look at this parcel because of the noise pollution from the airport as well as the traffic on Cornhusker. And so we feel based on all these different pieces, the previous attempts, the neighborhood support, the contiguous zoning along Cornhusker, that this is a valid request before you today to change the zone from R4 to H3.
Go ahead, Dick.
Why not meet with Planning and give them the information you just gave us?
Mark's met multiple times with Planning over the years. I can, I'll let you answer.
Yeah, I'm Mark Becker, I'm the property owner. I did meet with Planning several years ago, and they did give me some developers' names for residential use. I've owned the property for 30 years and just getting tired of mowing it, so I thought, well, let's do something with it. So if it's gonna be residential, it'll be residential, and I did meet with Planning. They gave me two names of developers that are pretty active developing this kind of property. One was Neighbor Works. They went out and said they were not interested at all, did not want a meeting. Habitat for Humanity said they were interested, went out and actually did an engineering study, and they sent me a letter saying that it did not meet their requirements for noise levels, and so they were not interested. And they said it was not suitable for what they do for residential, and that was all of the leads that Planning had for me.
Thank you.
If you put self-storage on there, where is your point of entry?
So the property here, there's a pretty big grade change, so there would probably be a, there would be no entry here because there's a pretty significant grade change. So the entry would be right in here.
Similar to your one across the road?
Yeah, it would be very similar to here. And it would be the same type of, I built this in 1996. Nice tilt-up building, and actually, I do own this property here. And the renter, well, actually, the whole neighborhood kind of applauds that buffer, and it's kind of turned his backyard into a little bit of a sanctuary. It's pretty nice.
How many storage units do you have in your existing?
Seventy-four units.
Seventy-four? And is that about, it seems like you have larger space. Do you think you'll be able to do more than that, or?
Depends on the size, and some of the units, obviously, we've got this to work with.
Right.
So we can't put any structure over this city sewer, so it would have to be a couple of structures smaller. I assume we can get more units in, but I think the units start at five foot by eight foot on the existing, so it just depends on the, on the mix of units. But it would be a low-volume, low-traffic site, just as the other one. I think they probably get about four vehicles per day.
Just ask my, answer my next question. Bravo.
Yeah, I noticed that, yeah.
It's not gonna be a high-intensive use.
Yeah, Rich.
Mark, the recommendation is for denial from the Planning Department. Would you entertain a deferral for three weeks to try to work some things out with them and have that changed to approval or conditional approval?
Well, I don't think that's appropriate, because I tried, I met with them quite a few times trying to get to some kind of solution, and we're, it's gonna take extensive amount of money from an engineering standpoint and a drawing standpoint, and I don't want to invest those monies if it's gonna be to no avail. I think I probably exhausted that with the Planning Department a few years ago. I mean, I'm open to ideas, but I don't want to postpone this any further, I guess.
So just, I'm just clarifying quick that you did have meetings, but those were
Years ago.
Years, previous, like
Couple of years ago, yeah. But they were very efficient meetings where we were, had a goal in mind. We weren't just checking things out and really trying to come up with solutions. And at the end, their only solution was really to change it to resident, leave it residential, and that's, I don't think that's the best use for that property or the neighborhood.
Yeah, Dick.
The, that piece of ground has always been kind of an eyesore, just as it is, coming around that corner. And having the self-storage there actually would make it more beneficial for the residential that's around and comparable to what you previously have established with your other self-storage. So I have a tendency to lean towards making this change, but as I understand it, you would have to come back through the Planning Commission with your plan for, for what you want to do with it.
That's correct.
So we would be able to make sure that it would be self-storage or something comparable.
Maybe not Planning Commission, but Planning Department for a final plat, because there are several lots on that parcel. We're gonna have to consolidate that to put the buildings on there. So this isn't the end-all-be-all. It's just saying, hey, this seems to really make sense for this parcel. And so we can continue that conversation, but previous conversations, we don't have felt that they were fruitful. I would like to give these letters of recommending approval into the minutes as well.
Dick, I would, I would agree. I think, I almost think residential would actually have a higher traffic flow on the road. But that's my preliminary thought, so, yeah.
All right, other questions for the applicant at this time? Okay. We may talk to you again during applicant rebuttal. All right, testimony in support of this application. Did you have more things you wanted to say?
Yes, I did, I didn't know.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't know if I missed my opportunity there. So again, my name's Mark Becker. My address is 1901 West O Street here in Lincoln. I've had this property for 30 years, been mowing it and scooping it and paying taxes on it for 30 years. And I have tens of thousands of dollars invested in that, and I think vacant ground does not send the right message to passersby. And I think I have a track record building a very handsome storage facility next door that made a nice buffer to the neighborhood. I think also the city is foregoing over the last, you know, to put a hundred thousand, to put a million-dollar facility on there 30 years ago, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars of revenue for the city. So I think that that can help enhance that area as well. I think this light commercial application works and residential does not. Multifamily does not make sense. It's not a good use in that mix of established businesses in the area. And I think we don't need any marooned islands of neighborhoods. I'd like to reflect, I'd like to make this change to reflect the space it's in. And I think the noise issue is a real issue, and so is the highway traffic for residential use. I think residential is not practical nor appealing. I think the storage is a nice buffer, and it's just really an expansion or an addition to the existing adjacent use. The entire adjacent neighborhood is in favor of this, and I've been involved and invested in that neighborhood for over 30 years. I lost my map now. I see the one of the neighbors that are there. So I also own another residential property up here. We did this one. I own this property. And I actually drove it, and from a residential standpoint, going this direction, which would be northwest, there is only one, there's no other residential use for two miles. And going east, he said three-quarters of a mile, but you can actually go two miles, and the only residential use on that side of Cornhusker Highway is that trailer court. So it makes, I mean, you've got four miles of contiguous non-residential use on that highway. I mean, it really isn't a marooned island. And I would be making an improvement, both for the city and the neighborhood. I do have extensive experience with this since 1996, and there are no, there are, I can't say no, but almost no people exiting this storage unit turn right and go up the hill. It's all used from Cornhusker in and out. So I don't think it would surcharge neighborhood traffic whatsoever. That's, it doesn't, it wouldn't make sense. Only if maybe a local resident was storing something there and just going back home, which really, that traffic is based on their residence and not my facility, so.
Okay. Thank you. All right, now we will move to testimony in support of this application. Any neutral testimony or testimony in opposition?
Hi, I'm Patricia Blankenfeld. I live at 2409 Northwest 9th, and we are in denial. We, we have enough traffic coming up that Northwest 9th to go north. Plus, we're scared he's going to sell it, and we're going to have another gas station, a car lot, something like that. So we are totally in denial.
Does anybody have any questions?
Do you see, I'm sorry, no, go ahead. Do you see current traffic from the storage unit on the other side?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
You betcha. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any additional testimony in opposition? All right. Staff questions? Thank you. Go ahead.
I want to know, if we did approve this today, how does, like, the next step, if you wanted to put a storage unit on their work? Do they have to come through Planning Department? Would it come back to us for a final plat?
A, as, as was pointed out, a consolidation final plat is a possibility on this site. A consolidation final plat does not necessarily require improvements, whether it's improvements to the roads around it, sidewalks, screening. There's not much that can be required with a final plat. There's not, the requirements would be part of a zoning agreement and would not be part of a consolidation final plat. And Steve can speak more on the consolidation final plat.
Steve Hendrickson, Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. I think, as Nate would agree, a consolidation final plat is actually set up to not require improvements. The whole idea is that if I have 10 lots and I'm going down to one, the Planning Department, it wouldn't be set up the consolidation final plat, but to try to speed the process so that those kind of final plats that, otherwise, I could go forward because I have 10 lots, but the building and safety department's requiring I consolidate them, that I'm actually, in most cases, reducing the amount of impact by going from 10 lots to one. So specifically, the process doesn't allow for improvements. So it is set up in that process. So, for instance, to address that both the streets have to be paved. Where is the access point? None of that's in the consolidation plat. That it has to be self-storage. It's a subdivision. It's not a zoning matter. We can't limit the uses through a consolidation final plat. So the, the way to address issues is through a zoning agreement, and that's what we said in 2020, and that's what we're saying now, is that really, the way you address all of the issues, will there be screening? What will the self-storage units look like? But most importantly, as the resident pointed out, there's nothing to prohibit the owner from deciding the market's not right for self-storage and selling it. And now that it has H3 zoning, it can allow any of the uses that are in H3. So that's why in other places, you had somebody go through the process and work out those improvements as a part of a change of zone, not afterwards. And all of the other applications you have before you today or in the past, they're trying to work out the conditions as to get approval of the change of zone, not get the change of zone, and then there's nothing afterwards. You would just go get your building permit, and that's that. And so, yes, some of the conditions that we would suggest, it's not keeping it as residential necessarily, though I think, Emma, could show you, it is possible to do residential. If you think about any of the busy streets in town, we don't line our busy streets from one end to the other end with res, commercial uses. We have residential uses all across southeast and east Lincoln, backing up to busy streets that probably have just as much traffic as Cornhusker Highway does. So, no, the consolidation final plat is not the process to address any of this. It's actually set up specifically not to do that.
Thanks, Steve. Additional questions for Emma?
What I'm hearing is now is the time to make those zoning agreements to make sure that's all in writing.
Yes, if, if a change of zone would be to be approved, there would need to be a zoning agreement to determine what improvements would be required. There's potential solutions to allow some commercial use on this property, but until it can be determined what those solutions are and put in writing that, yes, we're going to put screening, yes, we're going to pave this road, yes, we're going to move access somewhere else, it's premature to ask for this change of zone. And it is possible to put residential uses on this property. Here is, so, this is a representation. It is not perfectly to scale. Please forgive the inaccuracies, but there is enough space to put at least three residential uses on this property while also staying out of that 20-foot sanitary sewer easement. That sanitary sewer easement has been there since 1937, so it has been, it was an existing condition on the property in 1990 when it was purchased. It is true that you cannot build on the sanitary sewer, which does go along the property, but you can, but it can be inside yards and driveways can be placed over the sanitary sewer easement. So it is, while it is not buildable space, it is not prohibitive.
Usable.
Additionally, sorry, yes. So there is a possibility of residential uses on this property. So it is not, there's nothing prohibiting that on this property.
But if they wanted to do residential, we would still, I mean, you would still want to recommend that an agreement is made that improvements are done to the, to the street.
That would be part of a final plat, potentially.
Okay.
As it is R4 now.
Right.
They can, the owner can come in and do residential uses on the property. And I would also like to note that a, for an RV park, an RV park, or, I'm sorry, a mobile home park, excuse me, doesn't, is not allowed in R4 by right. It requires a special permit and 10 acres. So it would not be allowed on this property using, under the special permit conditions and the Lincoln Municipal Code.
Yeah, Dick.
But would not, well, under the present zoning, the car lot next to it would not be approved either, correct?
Are you speaking?
The car lot's to the north.
The car lot is in H3 zoning.
I'm sorry?
It is, the car lot is in, in H3 zoning.
Right.
So it is allowed in that zone.
Yeah.
By right.
But that would be my concern of seeing another car, used car facility going in there if, other than the storages or something like that.
Oh, are you saying you do, on this property, you're concerned? Okay, so yeah, that is what part, that is what the zoning agreement would be. It would be part of the purpose of the zoning agreement is to ensure that no, it, it, it would ensure that only certain H3 uses would be permitted on the property. Because with a straight rezone, a car lot would be allowed on there without any conditions. Self-storage as well, but so could a restaurant with a drive-through or any of those permitted uses in the H3. That is what a zoning, zoning agreement is created and agreed with, upon to ensure that there is not undue impact on the surrounding area and that solutions are found to the concerns on a site.
But do you, does the Planning Department have any strong opposition to storage units?
I think I will need Steve's support on this. It's, in this case, we are speaking more on denial of a straight rezone. There, we have not had discussions in 2024 with the applicant regarding that.
But as we were saying, there's, there's multiple issues here to be addressed. Potentially, a self-storage complex, when done the right way, you address where the access is going to be, is going to address the paving, the screening of Cornhusker Highway, all those things, if you could address it, yeah, then potentially, it might be able to work. And that's why we're suggesting that if the zoning district is H3, you need to have a zoning agreement that addresses all of those issues. And it's not something you, we think is appropriate to kind of work out on the fly, that it is something that takes some thought and preparation, and that's what we're doing with our other applicants, is usually we have pre-meetings and try to work through the conditions in advance.
Thank you very much. All right. Anything else for, Emma, at this time, staff questions? All right. Opportunity for applicant rebuttal?
I think from our perspective, previous meetings have led to the direction of keeping the R4 zoning, and this is maybe kind of the first time there's been some openness and willingness to have the H3 with conditions. And so I think based on that, that, you know, that's previous conversations, or hey, let's keep pushing the H4, or the R, sorry, R4. And those discussions were with Habitat for Humanity. We had the letter as part of the, the application that said, hey, we wouldn't be in favor of this. And so that's why, I know, Dick, you had mentioned, hey, have you met with Planning Department? We feel like we've already gone that route, and so now we're kind of maybe hearing a little bit, a little bit different of, hey, there could be the H3 with conditions. And so I think, you know, we have the H3 contiguous along there. The buildable area's really not that high on the site with the easements, with the setbacks. Whether it's a consolidation or final plat, there will need to be something done. Building permit's going to address screening. There's other potential things that could be addressed during the building permit process, access, and things like that. So, Mark, I don't know if there's anything else you'd like to say.
Yeah. In order to have a car lot, you need to have a recommendation from Planning, and that's part of the dealer board's requirements. So you can't just get appropriate zoning and throw up a dealer lot. That's not, that's, that's an incorrect statement. We don't want to do a car lot there. We want to do storage, which is what I've done adjacently. But I think I'm a little frustrated because I have to jump through all these hoops to get it, I mean, we're kind of at a fork in the road, and are we going to go commercial or are we going to go residential? And, well, let's spend a bunch of money in engineering, looking at options for a commercial for highway, when we don't know if we're going to approve it. It just seems like a, a big investment. I mean, it's thousands of dollars that are not going anywhere if we don't get it approved. So I think if we do zone this H3, we still have to get a building permit and go through all of those things, and they can require screening, and they can require, I mean, we'll work with them with access. But again, adjacently, I did the same thing 28 years ago, and that's the kind of use that I want to do, and I think that that would be beautiful now. So I mean, that's what we want to do. But I can't just throw up a storage unit without a building permit. So for them to say that I could just throw up any kind of commercial use and all these things are permitted, I think that that's not a, that's not a realistic case. And this property is so small, and the amount of revenue that we generate is so limited, that's why I've left it vacant for 30 years. There's just not a lot of juice to be had out of the squeeze there. So I don't want to spend tens of thousands of dollars looking at opportunities. I want to get things narrowed down. I'd like to have it approved for H3, and then we can look at H3 uses and obviously go through the building permit process that will not allow us to do use that the city doesn't want there.
Going back to Rich's comment earlier, would you be willing to delay this for three weeks and have discussions with Planning without going to the expense of getting the engineer involved and so on at, at this point in time? If you can work out something with Planning on what, what limited H3 opportunities you would have, then I think that simplifies it and allows you to proceed in, in the direction. But I, I think you're on the right track with, with self-storage along in there. That makes sense to me. But I, I'd rather see you work with Planning and see if you can't come to some agreement.
I mean, I can do that. I'm glad to pursue that. Last time we did that, they just said, basically, that residential was the, what they wanted to see happen there, and gave me some recommendations. And, and their, their drawings are beautiful, but I'm not, I don't build houses, so I went after their recommendations with their two people, who are the largest builders of affordable housing in Lincoln, and neither one of them had any interest at all. So that kind of precludes residential in my mind. I think we've got to leave it vacant, or, but yeah, I mean, I'm glad to talk to them. But we need to get somewhere.
Well, I, I just think that there's better opportunities that way, and, and it would, might clear up some things and, and allow you to proceed without a great deal of expense.
Yeah. I just don't want to end up with a, a bunch of expense on a, based on an unknown or, and a, a use that's not going to get approved because we're just funding.
Well, I think if, if you came back in three weeks and indicated to us, here's what Planning and you could agree with, and here's what you can't agree with, then that leaves a choice for the, for the Planning Commission.
All right.
So I think we're requesting a deferral then?
As I said, do you need it?
I would still prefer just an approval, but I guess.
Well, I mean, currently, we're in applicant rebuttal.
Yep.
So if they would like to make the request, then we can consider that. And then we would vote on that request. If they prefer not to let us have our, to introduce a motion, whether to approve or deny, then we would have a debate, and we would either approve or deny. So.
So what is the process in three weeks? We come back and do what in three weeks?
Same thing.
Testify again, and as to what conclusion has been reached between you and the Planning Department.
And then we would just vote the same thing like we're doing today? Yeah, that's fine with me. We'll have to start over, over.
Yeah.
We will request a deferral to the next Planning Commission meeting.
All right. Okay, we have heard that. Thank you very much.
I would move the
So now, hold on just a second. We do not close the public hearing then. We are just
Right.
Yeah. So I just want to make sure that was your motion and not to close public hearing.
Yeah. So I would move to delay application changes on 24013 until our June 25th meeting?
Is that the same language as deferral?
Deferral, yeah.
Second, Joy?
All right. Any discussion or just, would you like to move forward with the vote?
I would like to see Planning work of them. Residential does not make sense to me in this location. It, it, the other residences are at least a block off of, of that, but it's, it's just doesn't make sense to have residential along Cornhusker Highway. So.
And I would hope that you can make some headway with the Planning Department without having to spend your tens of thousands at this point. And I'd look forward to seeing this back in three weeks.
Without having any current conversation, there's no way to know what those would be. If I, not meeting?
Yeah.
Nothing, no progress is made. Okay. All right. Any additional discussion? All right. Shelley?
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Fight?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Reiman Yos?
Yes.
Request for deferral to June 26th Planning Commission hearing approved, seven to zero.
All right. We'll see you then. Thank you. All right. You're leaving?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Next item is item 4.2, Special Permit 1713D to amend the Aspen Third Edition Community Unit Plan to revise the existing site plans to include up to 100 multifamily dwelling units on property generally located at the northwest intersection of Stephanie Lane and Red Rock Lane. This is final action. Are there any expedite communications to be disclosed on this application?
No.
Are there any expedite communications that took place or additional information learned while visiting any of this site to be disclosed?
Also, no.
Good afternoon. Ben Callahan with the Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. Today, there's a request to amend the existing special permit for the Aspen Third Community Unit Plan. Up here, the general location, so we're south of Pine Lake Road and west of South 56th Street. This is one of the last, or probably the last vacant lot within the CUP, and the applicant is requesting to amend the existing plan to show a future multifamily building.
building, which we can talk about here. A little background on the history of the CUP. So it was approved in 1998. It was originally approved for almost 400 dwelling units within the boundary. In 2004, Madonna was then developed and put into a use permit. So that did shrink the CUP boundary a little bit. But this area would still be within that. And they are requesting with this, then they'd be using an unassigned number of dwelling units that still exist within the CUP based off of the original density. Just to kind of show what's around the property. So it's zoned R4, and then to the north with Madonna 03. The east, which has a variety of different retail, but pharmacy, dentist, tire repair, Zone B2. And then the post office is to the south, which is zoned 03. So on the site plan that's, looks, this is what is currently existing, it's shown as Outlet C. When Madonna was developed, at one point, this was actually shown for almost 300 dwelling units between different apartment buildings up to Pine Lake. When Madonna came through and redid this into a use permit, this was just put into an Outlet C and for future residential uses, which is common when there's no exact development they were going to show on the site at that time. With this development, so they are proposing to update the plan to show one building on the site with up to a maximum of 100 units. It would be following an allowed height limit of 55 feet. So there were some questions on that. And that's, originally with the R4, they would have been limited to 35 feet. In 2021, City Council did a text amendment, and that is for PUDs and CUPs across the city, that if you're outside of the neighborhood design standards, you're allowed a height limit of 55 feet. So they would be following what's allowed in the zoning code today. Outside of that, it'd be a 25-foot buffer around the building. They're not requesting any waivers with this application. So the parking at 1.5 spaces per unit would be met, I believe, all underground parking under the building. And then outside of that, they'd have one, or I guess the entrance point on Red Rock Lane, keeping, and that was a part of Planning's request to keep the entrance off of Norris Lane with the existing single-family homes. And then, just looking at what the comprehensive plan shows here, so it actually shows this area for future commercial. So this was kind of a mix. It's seen a little bit as an infill project because it has been set for 26 years, as well as a little bit of a buffer from your existing neighborhood into existing commercial, which multifamily would fit into a commercial use in the comp plan. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Just, oh, go ahead, Rich.
There was some concern in written opposition about, well, the traffic, but also rainwater runoff.
Yeah. So first on the traffic, let's go back to this. So with, with the neighborhood currently, I know there's noted concern that cars would head west to go west onto Pine Lake, which could be done, as there is a light on Beaver Creek. But I would point out that the sites will still have access to three other points to get out of the neighborhood. So you'd have two more on Pine Lake, and then one to the east on South 56th. South 56th is a full access point, so it is open to take a left. I believe some of the comments were, with traffic at peak times, it's harder to take a left. But overall, and Bob Simmering is here with, he'll tell you if we have questions later, but we weren't requiring a traffic study as the site is already allowed to be residential. So there's no change of zone or change of use being requested. They're primarily just updating the existing plan to show the multifamily building.
Ben, can you just repeat one more time what the number that was way back when it was planned without Madonna there? How many residentials were originally planned in that area? Like, I know that it included the Madonna section, so.
Originally, it would be, it was almost, it was a little under 400 with the Madonna site. When that was changed and the boundary was brought down, that brought it down to, still roughly today, they have 196, I believe, units left in the CUP that are undesignated.
Right, okay.
So after this building, they would still have 96 left over in the CUP, which is common.
They're technically not filling up their maximum that they could for dwellings. Okay. Thank you.
And the water issue?
Yeah, with grading and drainage, they did submit grading and drainage plans. That would be reviewed by watershed, but that would also be held to the same grading standards at, for, on the site when they develop.
All right. Other questions? They had, they already asked mine, so, all right. All right. Thanks, Ben. All right. We'll now take testimony from the applicant.
Chairman members of the Planning Commission, I'm Mark Hunziker. I'm representing McCombs Realty, Inc., the contract purchaser of this site. Ben's done a pretty good job of summarizing this proposal. We're really pretty excited about this project because we think it's going to be relatively unique in Lincoln in terms of its unit size, security, garage parking, and so forth. These are, these are designed, this building is not fully designed, so these numbers are a little bit approximate, so a little bit of movement one way or the other on the, on the size of these units. But generally speaking, we're, this building is, is now thought to be around 33 one-bedroom apartments, which will be 1,200 to 1,250 square feet. 57 two-bedroom apartments, which will be 2,100 square feet, more or less. And four penthouses on the top floor, which will be probably in the 4,000 to 5,000 square foot range. We think this is, again, fairly unique. We have 200 parking stalls in the garage, plus about 16 guest stalls that would be a surface parking in the outside. The demographic that we're shooting for here is a relatively affluent, probably empty nesters, looking to downsize, trying to eliminate steps. And a lot of the folks who will live here, we think, will not be there a lot of the year. They will be in warmer climates in the wintertime, they'll be in the mountains in the summertime, they'll be visiting grandchildren, and other travel. And they can lock them and leave them with no worries about yard maintenance, snow removal, security, or any of those things that you have with a, with a home, with a house. The, the Aspen Community Unit Plan, as Ben suggested, has about 194, 196, I don't remember the exact number, unbuilt but approved units. And we're asking for authorization for 100. So in terms of the amount of traffic we're creating here, it's about half of what it could be, and significantly less than what it could be if it were developed for office space, for example. If we did something like medical office space on this site, the trips would be much higher, they would be more likely to be at the peak hours, and prob, I, I think you'd probably put, you know, 50,000, 60,000 square feet of office space on this site. We think in terms of that issue, traffic, this is a much better solution than almost any other that you can imagine for this site. Again, we're, we're, we're in compliance with everything that the existing community unit plan requires. We're in compliance with the height. We will, we will comply with the city's design standards for grading and drainage. And we appreciate the recommendation of approval by the Planning Department. We have our architect here today, Ed Vidlac with BBH. Ed has some, some slides, I think, we'll show you that, please don't, please don't think these are, these are final. They're not. But we think this will give you at least an idea of the scale and how this fits on the site.
Hi. My name's Ed Vidlac. I'm with BBH Architecture and part of the design team that's been working with McCombs Commercial Realty for the past few weeks. I've got one of our design partners, Kyla Crouch, who's our civil engineer. One of the first things we did was develop a program statement with the client. Program statement is basically a recipe for the, for the project. And then the second thing was applying that recipe then to the site. We call that a yield study. How can the site be optimized? So that's been the exercise that we've been in. Some of these images that you're seeing right now are that I'm about to show you reflect that yield study exercise. But by no means, as Mark pointed out, this is not the final design. In fact, we haven't really officially started design. We're just test fitting the site. I don't know, can everyone see this? Yeah. So Ben already shared sort of a diagram of the site. This is really the building as it might, or that recipe, as I described it, that program statement, as it might be arranged in a four-story solution with a podium, a garage podium that would be partially buried into the site. And again, we're looking at optimizing the site so that we are using ingress and egress off of Red Rock Lane, some site parking off of that drive lane, and then entering a parking garage for the majority of the parking that would be used by the residences. The top floor, the fourth floor, is intentionally designed to be flexible. The red boxes you see at the top, or the brownish-red boxes, those are implying approximate sizes for the penthouse condominiums on the top level. And then the three floors of dwelling units below that penthouse are designed to accommodate that one- and two-bedroom mix that Mark mentioned. We're starting out with the assumption that those are high-end apartment units, with the idea that they could be converted to privately owned condominiums in the future. So again, a different model than the typical multifamily, which has made it an interesting project for the design team, and we feel a very suitable project for the site. I think Ben located, I think this is just a location slide here. Madonna's, their Pine Lake Road campus, Stephanie Lane campus is right directly to the north of our site. Stephanie Lane then is to the, to the east. Norris Lane is to the west and south. And then we're, we're, we're using Red Rock to access our site from the south. This just shows how the site, again, test fitting the site and how that building mass might fit, showing the setback lines, 20 feet around the north, east, and south, and then 30 feet along Norris Lane. Again, this is a breakdown of the dwelling units per floor, and the mix adds up to, in this diagram, this model here, about 94 units, approximately 200,000 square feet across the, the four living unit floors. And then again, 200 stalls in that parking garage below. Reiterating, this is not the design. I know renderings nowadays, when they're shown this way, it looks like a final solution. But we, we built this just as, just as a means of studying that 55-foot height limit and how it might fit within the neighborhood. This is along Norris Lane with that 30-foot setback. And I think Mark mentioned that we'll be taking into account drainage control across the site, but also landscaping. The client has asked that the perimeter of the building be buffered with landscape architecture and have a softer edge than what is seen with some of the other commercial buildings to the north and to the east. So this is just a crude attempt of showing some of that softer edge that I think the client's talking about. That's, that's where we are currently with pre-design.
All right. Questions for the applicant?
Yeah. Do you, do you have any idea compared to Madonna, your height? If Madonna's at a, that same height?
Uh, we're, this, this model here is about 55 feet. I believe Madonna's at around 40.
Okay.
So it's a story shorter, I believe.
Or Sutton, which is.
Or Sutton, which is, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I was on the same lines, but Madonna's at a lower profile than this would be. And the thing that had bothered me about this concept was that it's going to be so much taller than anything else around it, residential as well as the rest of the commercial, because this is at the top of the very point of the hill, where the rest of the elements are down on a profile either north or east that are at much lower elevations.
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a fair criticism and one that we would take into great consideration during the design phase, in making sure that the massing of the building is diminished. One of the reasons why you see the hinge or the, the kink, if you will, in the, in the floor plan is because we were already starting to explore that notion of, hey, we can't just have a big, long bar, 55-foot tall bar across the site. Let's see how we can diminish the scale of the building by how it might fit the site in a different way. So that's one of the strategies that we've already started to look at, but.
Well, and if you go back to that very first picture that you showed, the one that actually I think shows from the end, there you are. There really is very little, one of the biggest complaints from the neighbors has been the windows coming out towards the west, showing, looking down on all of their residences. And basically, with this design, if I'm understanding it correctly, there's very few west window present in your anticipation.
Right, yeah. The, the idea there is that most of the dwelling units would be oriented either directly to the north or directly to the south in terms of views and vistas. Yeah, that's correct. Okay.
Questions?
Just one thing I overlooked to, or forgot to mention is that the intent here is to also have access to the Madonna facilities for all the residents of this building. And to the point of, of the, the height and softening that edge, I think the early estimate on the grading plan for this site is that we've got somewhere around 15,000 or 18,000 cubic yards of excess dirt, which we probably can use along that Norris Lane in particular to do some birmingham to soften that up as well.
And if I may piggyback on Mark's comment there, one of the strategies that the client came forward with at the very beginning was trying to tuck in as much of that parking out of sight and under the building as possible, as opposed to spreading the site with, with concrete. So that notion of surrounding the building with more of a park-like setting was very important to McCombs.
Yeah, Rich.
So if someone has a guest and they don't have access to the underground parking, where would they park?
We're, we're, oh, I'm sorry, Mark.
But we, we, didn't we have the site plan that showed that?
Yeah, it's been right there.
This, yeah. If I can, I don't know if I can, I can't, I can't do that. Can you do that with the, with the cursor?
We're showing, I, I don't know if you could see my cursor there, but we're showing approximately 15 to 20 stalls. Again, we need to work with Kyle and his group on how that eventually lays out. We're, we're showing that wrapping around the main entrance to the building. So there will be some onsite visitor parking that would be accessible to a controlled entrance from that side.
Yeah. Access to the building will be completely controlled. There will be elevators serving the entire garage, separate elevators serving the penthouses, and access in the front door will, will be a ring-in kind of access.
And the south side, just above Madonna, the south side of Pine Lake Road does have a sidewalk, right? I was thinking about pedestrian access to other, right? Because there isn't, because there isn't a light at 56th and Red Rock, but there is at Pine Lake, so pedestrian access across the street would be, yeah, it is sidewalked. Okay.
Yeah, there's sidewalk along both Pine Lake and 56th Street, at least for a little ways south of Red Rock.
Additional questions?
Housing Authority didn't build their sidewalk. Housing Authority didn't build their sidewalk.
Additional questions at this time? All right, thank you both very much.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, we will have testimony in support of this application. Any testimony in support? Neutral testimony? And anyone here to testify in opposition?
My name is, I'm Martin Hall, and I'm at 7211 Norris Lane, which is directly across the street. And first of all, I'd like to thank Ben for all his patience in dealing with this and asking all the questions and his quick responses. But I guess my summary would be, while this fits well within the city limits that have been expressed, I think there's also a component of, does it fit in the neighborhood? And I think that is a part of the comprehensive plan. And my contention would be that it does not fit within the structure of the neighborhood. If you look at the things that are up there, the neighborhood doesn't have things jammed together. There's a lot of space. There's a lot of open space. There's a commons area. And now, what I heard today was, well, there was a total number based on the whole plan. Now there's only three acres left, and we're jamming as many units as we can into those three acres. The other concern, I guess I would have, is, you know, we've talked about the height, and even though, if you look at it, there's no building in that area that's more than two stories high. Even though Madonna and Sutton Dermatology are high, they don't have any more than two levels. And there is plenty of buffer between those areas. The other thing I would say is, if you look at the original, or if you look at the modification in 2004, it's clear that it says that the 326 multifamily units are being eliminated from the plan. And now it's coming back in, which I'm not exactly sure how, you know, how that comes back in when they were eliminated in the first place. The other thing is, on the original 1998 plan, there were four buildings that were multifamily. There was a lot of buffer around those buildings, even though it was not, you know, required. That was the intent. And all four of those buildings, where they were placed, were less than 19 units, were less than 20 units per acre. And now we're talking about a three-acre spot that we're talking about 100 potential units. So it seems like it's definitely counter to what the original intent was. And again, I think, you know, the height situation, if you look, Madonna, well, it was high, it was at 30. It was moved to the north end of the property so that there's no interference. And also then, there was an additional buffer put to the west of Norris Lane from the residential area. And again, I think, you know, even though it's not a city requirement, if you look at the original 1998 plan, there was buffer between multifamily and single-family that's not being realized on this particular proposal. So.
Questions? Thank you. Additional testimony in opposition?
My name is Jim Manning. I live on 7105 Beaver Creek Lane. We did attend, my wife and I, and about 50 or 60 other people did attend the meeting, talking about this. And several things that stood out and that came up at that meeting that haven't been mentioned here is that we think 16 surface stalls for a guest for 100 apartments seems a little bleak and unrealistic. So it seems like it would be likely there will be a lot of parking on the street, because you can't use everybody's garage underneath. So I think parking will be a big issue. The streets are pretty narrow up there. The other thing, they say they're intending on affluent elderly people to live there, but they haven't suggested that would be a 55-year or older facility to live in. We think that would be very appropriate so that it doesn't get more younger people in there, more cars, more traffic. The reality is, there's a whole lot of traffic coming out of that area that's going west to South Point, all the restaurants, the grocery stores, pretty much that area is going, a lot of the traffic that lives there is going west, which means they're going to come down Old Creek and Sugar Creek, and they're all going to end up at the light, at Pine Lake, which the green light, if you live on Beaver Creek, trying to get across the light, is usually 14 seconds green for people coming off of Beaver Creek Lane. So I think the city needs to look a lot at what they're going to talk about for traffic. Old Creek Road is also a private, it's a blue, a blue street, and the blue lane markers, so it's a private, and it's very narrow. You can hardly get through it on Tuesday's mornings when the yard crews are working. So I think there's, and I don't know how the construction's going to go, but I think those are things that are really going to be, mess up a neighborhood and cause a lot of problems for people that live there. So that's my input. And thank you for having this hearing.
Thank you.
My name's Robert McCullough. I live at 7231 Norris Lane. And with the traffic going down Norris Lane, it is a narrow lane, I mean, a narrow road. And what people do not realize, going down there, especially in the wintertime, it is so slick in the roundabout right down there on Allen Road and Norris Lane. It is so slick. All those signs, every winter, have been knocked down in the circle, in the middle of the circle, and on the sides of the circle. And our neighbor that lives on the corner, they've had their mailbox knocked down a couple times. And then when you look at the snow on Red Rock Lane, that, when it blows, you only have half of the lane, a lot during the wintertime till it melts, because it blows over onto Red Block Rain, Red Rock Lane, about half the distance. So I just want to note that, too. Okay?
Thank you. Is there any other additional testimony on this application?
Thank you all for having us here today. I'm not comfortable speaking in public, but it's important, so I will. Oh, my name is, that's why I'm not comfortable. My name is Brenda Tony. I live at 7201 Norris Lane, right by the roundabout. So I concur with the three other neighbors that have spoken today. I'm the mailbox that gets keep knocking down, by the way. The slickness of the street, we actually keep sand in our garage to go and help people that get stuck in the roundabout. When the post office was under some construction up there, traffic was really bad. I don't know if anyone else noticed it, but the traffic would be, kind of stop and go. And just with that increased traffic from this complex, it's just going to be difficult. And looking around Lincoln, I understand, people park on public roads. Norris, Red Rock, it is a public road. It's a highly, highly, heavily trafficked. Cars go very fast there. And I just don't see how the overflow parking from the complex along those two streets, I just think that's going to be problematic. On the issue of traffic, and it doesn't personally affect me, but those that live to, as others have stated, when you, people cut through the neighborhood. It's just what's going to happen. They're going to cut through the neighborhood. There's going to be a lot of traffic. We have a lot of older neighbors that live in the community, and it's just going to, I don't know, maybe double, triple the traffic flow there. And the safety of that is a concern. The number one concern that I have, many of the neighbors have, is the height. If the building was shorter, it's just something. But the height is just, on that hill, is going to be so, so tall. It's going to be a focal point. It's not going to blend. I think it's just going to be huge. And no matter how much they soften it with trees, landscaping, how long does it take those trees to grow? I mean, we're just going to be living there, looking at a wall. The other issues on that, let me look at my notes here, and my glasses. Yeah. Back in 1998, when this was made, and Martin spoke on it earlier, we had apartment complexes, and they were spread out, and then there were parking spaces. They assume we'd rather look at a big wall than a parking space, but I'm not so sure about that. I built my house on the roundabout. My window faces a roundabout and parking spaces. That's fine with me. I like having the sun come in. I'm not so sure about looking at a wall. But 1998, when that was built, the apartments were big, and then they got smaller. There's a couple smaller ones next to the path and the commons area. And then there was a nice big buffer of greenery between that and the houses. And that's what was planned. So those of us that had built our homes prior to 2021, when the height increased to 55 feet, which is 100% of us built it before then, had no way of anticipating that this is what was going to be there. And I just think, my husband has mentioned it to me, I don't like sports. I don't understand sports. He says the goalpost moved, whatever that means. But that's what his concerns are. And I appreciate that the windows to the west will be few. I heard that today, and I do appreciate that. But how few will there be balconies? I don't know. Assumptions that it'll be 55 and older? Maybe. And I mean, I hope it is. If what they're saying it's older and it's quiet neighborhood, that's great. But if they're gone half the year, there's still a lot of people there the other half of the year, and that's when we're all out and about, too. And so the traffic's going to back up and be full during that time period.
One more minute.
Okay, good. The drainage and water, you've talked about before. I don't really know anything about it, other than I know my neighbors. And there's a big, big project going in right now about that water issue, and I'd kind of like to have that looked into in more depth. Talked about the parking. I think that's it. I do appreciate your time very, very much. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Can I leave?
Thanks. All right. Any additional testimony?
Good afternoon. Just a few additional comments. My name is Sam Cruz.
Could you go to either one of the microphones?
Over here. Let's try this.
Okay.
Good afternoon. My name is Sam Cruz. My address is 7241 Norris Lane. No relation to the panel member, so I have no in there. Just a couple of comments, so I don't duplicate. But there is something written on page four of the future plan. It goes something like this. "Infill of existing neighborhoods should complement the character of the existing neighborhood by including appropriate transition, scale, and context." And I think the scale is mostly what we're concerned about here. And Dick said it really good early on with the height. If you're adding 55 feet already on a hill, it's just going to look larger than that. The other apartments that aren't really close to us, but the level down by the Village Gardens, that's, it's kind of low. Chateau on 40th and Yankee Hill sits kind of low. It seems that a lot of apartments being built are in clusters. North of Saltillo and 27th, there's a big group down there. Southeast and southwest of 40th and Yankee, south of 75th and Yankee, they seem to be in clusters and not just these monster 55-footers sitting on a hill in a developed neighborhood when you look around and don't see that in the area. Dick made a comment on the earlier zone change. He said it was a nice lot before, but this would be more beneficial to the neighborhood. So using that quote, I can't think we can say that here. A couple of comments that I've want to bring up from our earlier meeting with this group was, it was presented as it would be 55 feet tall, and it could be higher, but not 65 feet. So I don't know if there's some leeway in the 55 feet once you start building, or what the reference was to at that time. Also, the 200 parking stall number, it is 188 now on the plan, just for clarity. I'm not sure there's much else to say. We've been told that it could be worse, that there could be more units, that they could put in items with above-ground parking, that it could turn into commercial. But is that really what the standard should be for our Lincoln neighborhoods, that it could be worse? Or would you rather have a standard that says we can do better? Thank you.
All right. Anyone else here to testify on this item? Can we just do a quick show of hands if there are other people? I mean, come forward. I just, each time it looks like nobody's getting up, and then I just am trying to get an idea of where we're at. Okay, great. Thank you.
I'm Diane Danaly at 7252 Sugar Creek Circle, and I'm the Aspen Common Greens Association President and the Sugar Creek Homeowner Association Member-at-Large on the Board. I concur with everything that's been said. I just want to bring some attention to something that I know firsthand, and that is the, excuse me, the bioswelle. That's in the Aspen Green Commons. We had this city out a few years ago because we were having erosion into the property of the neighbors that bordered that. So there is a big concern about drainage. So I want to make sure that that's appropriately looked at because of the problems that we're already having. The old conduit tubings have disintegrated. The city could not come up with a solution for us, so there's not really a solution, other than we just try to continue to have cattails and stuff to slow things down. But that is a major concern, is that if we're adding anything more, we're already having problems with erosion into the, a few of the neighbors on that side of the Aspen Green Commons, which is...
There you go. Perfect. Yes, point that out.
It'll come eventually.
Automatic, but it just takes a second to wake up.
Well, so you know, it's just, there's the Norris Lane. Okay. So what we're talking about is this area here. So you've got the development here, you've got Norris Lane, Allen, 52nd. So this is the bioswelle, and that's where all this drainage is coming from uphill and down and feeds on down here. And it's a... And it's eroding into these houses here because it can't handle the amount of water that's coming through. So I did want to point that out. And also, my concern is, is the city going to take a look at the traffic? Because a lot of this wasn't here before. And so now we're getting a lot of development there, and it's difficult, very difficult to make a left there. So you've got this traffic trying to get out, do lefts and do rights, these coming down left and right, which is why, as everybody said, people are coming down Sugar Creek to go out and use that light. And that's going to be a major concern. So even if this development goes through, I hope the city will be prudent in figuring out how people can turn both left and right on 56th to keep that traffic out of the neighborhood and just piling up at Beaver Creek and Pine Lake. Any questions? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Dick has a question. Oh, sorry.
It isn't a question, but just a piece of information, because there were several letters that we received that noted it. Red Rock and 56th Street is already pre-wired for a signal. It, it has to reach a certain number of traffic stops, and that's 500, and it's getting close to that now. So even though we're on the other side of, with Boboli and against Red Rock, the two meet, we will be asking the city to do another traffic study shortly.
We're very glad to hear that. Thank you.
Any additional testimony? All right. Staff questions?
Do you like to start? Sure. Do you, there was mention about parking on the streets, so I don't know, and maybe you don't, are, is parking along those streets allowed?
Yes. Yeah, it would be allowed, and it'd be worth mentioning, so the route west or within this neighborhood, so along Allen, Sugar Creek, Beaver Creek, those are all standard roadway widths and public right of way, so it would be allowed to park on the side.
Thank you. Just wanted to clear that up.
The, the biggest difficulty is a curve right there at the south end of the...
So I was going to say, that's my biggest concern with the entrance and exit of this building being on that curve. That makes me nervous. But that's just my own personal comment.
All right. Additional questions?
Which, can you show, oh, sorry. Can you show us on the map which streets are private designated by blue street signs?
I believe Old Creek Road to the north, and then this, this area down here is private, which would be south of any route to, to go west. So, so we'd have Allen, Sugar Creek, Beaver Creek would all be...
And one of the letters was concerned about construction deterioration of those streets, and that would be back on the, the association to, to make repairs. Any thoughts on that?
Maybe something the developer can mention. The city wouldn't be able to restrict access to construction. It's a public right of way in general for the neighborhood, but that may be something they could speak on what they propose.
Was there any traffic concerns with the curvature of the road?
Not to my knowledge, but I might bring Bob up for any traffic questions.
Always good to bring Bob up.
While we're waiting for Bob to come up on the height issue, do you, is it possible to know the total height of like the Sutton Dermatology Building? Because it's tall. I'd just be curious to know. I was trying to look and see if I could find it, but I wasn't.
Steve might be able to check on that, but I'm not.
All right. But, all right. Thanks for coming up.
Thank you. Bob Simmering, LTU, 555 House 10th. And your question, actually with Dick Campbell making these comments on traffic, I thought we would recruit him in our traffic department. He came up with the numbers and everything. So I wouldn't have known that number. But certainly the, we discussed this with our traffic department when we knew it was coming up, because there are concerns about that 56th Street access point. And as he says, there will be a traffic study going on there, looking at that as far as when that will meet warrants for the signal. And obviously, it's very close. The other question about their access point and the hill or the curvature, we do have requirements for site triangles at those, so there possibly could be restrictions on the parking approach, at that approach point.
Great. Thank you. Any other LTU questions?
Back to, no, back to Ben.
Okay. I think we're done. Thank you. All right.
Ben, even though our record, our, even though our, our rules say you can build up to 55 foot, there doesn't appear to be any consideration of the elevations of the ground around. Is that correct?
That's correct. So anywhere across the city, it wouldn't take into account for any building if it's on a hill or flat, but it does go off an average grade. So during the permit process, they would take that into account as one side of the building could be 30 as it's tucked into the hill, and then it would get taller as it moves west. But overall, if the site is on a hill or flat, it wouldn't be part of a height limitation.
But the average grade is considered.
Correct. Yeah. They would show an average around the building.
Right. And similarly, if you are in a valley, you don't get bonus points to build higher, right? Your building is the building.
No bonus points. Got it.
And would note, what their comment about, so the surrounding zoning, so 03 to the north and south, and then B2 to the east are, those are both 55 feet height limits in those zoning districts.
Oh, they were. Okay.
Good to know.
There was a comment, Ben, I just wanted to give you an opportunity to talk about that, saying that when, like when Madonna was built, that that eliminated units from the plan, and now they're being added back in. It was, it changed it, right? I just wanted to have you clarify that.
Yeah. What, what that did was similar to other PUDs or CUPs, when we might have an amendment. And so at one time when that was approved, that showed what they were planning with the larger multifamily buildings, and there were some 18-plex along the west side of them. But when Madonna came in, so that updated the site plan, took it out of the CUP. And at that time, most likely because they didn't have a development to show on that site, so that it was just left as an outlot, which would be similar to an outlot for future development. But what didn't change is that the CUP still had a surplus of density that was originally approved.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Yeah.
There were, I was on the Long Range Planning Committee a number of years back, and I learned that when a development is proposed, that there are certain density requirements. If you want to have some one acre lots and some half acre lots, you knew that there were going to have to be some apartments also in that development to fulfill a certain density. Is that still in effect?
For the, for calculating the density of a total, so with any PUD or, PUDs are actually, they do not have a density cap, but a CUP like this, that'd be working up, the underlying zoning within our code has a certain number of dwelling units per acre. So even this one dating back to 98, so they had their own density calculation that showed what was allowable within the whole perimeter. Similar to today is how we'd work on that too, is give a total number, and then the developer would be able to kind of mix that around if they're doing multifamily or some larger lots. It's just they can't go over that cap.
So at this point, they couldn't say, well, we'd like to put some half acre residences in there. You need to have some density.
There would, there wouldn't be a density, like a maximum density requirement there. It's more of just a blanket density they can work with within the boundary.
Okay.
Mr. Hendrickson, were you able to find that height? Okay. That's fine. I was just curious. All right. Anything else? All right. Thank you very much. All right. Appicent.
Just a few quick points. This property is properly zoned. It's already approved for more than double the number of units that we're proposing. We are putting all of the required parking in a garage as opposed to a surface lot. We're providing surface parking for guests. We don't expect there to be a parking problem. We think we've got more than enough parking for both the residents and potential guests. The height is, is again, a matter of right. The ordinance allows for height of this type. The topography of this site is such that there's about, if I can put this up and just From Red Rock to approximately our garage entrance, there's 15 feet of fall. So from this angle in this area, chances are you're not even going to see the first floor of this building because of the way it, because of the topography of the site. Plus, as I mentioned earlier, we're going to have excess dirt that we can use to berm along Norris. So the, the visual impact of, of the building, I think, seems like it might be a, a big deal, but I think it will be less of a factor than, than you imagine when you look at the site as it sits today. There will be a lot of site work done when that building is, is put into the ground as we have, as we are for the parking. I think it'll, it'll diminish that impact considerably. The comprehensive plan calls for roughly 25% of all new dwelling units during the entire planning period to be built within the existing city limits. If you read Ben's report, he, he lays out in great detail how well this fits within the comprehensive plan's vision for increasing the density within the existing city and building this type of project to fill in vacant spots within the city. And there really aren't very many of them. I mean, reaching that goal of 25% is not going to be easy because there just aren't very many vacant sites within the existing city limits. Heard about restricting the age, the age of people who live here. We, we have no intention of ask, of imposing any sort of age restrictions. We expect that most of the people who live here will be in that age category, but we're not going to restrict it that way. And the traffic, again, we're building half of what's already approved, and even if we were, and, and if it were built for office or other commercial use, the traffic, the trips in and out would be much greater and much more likely to be at the peak hours when difficulty of getting across 56th Street at Red Rock is the worst. I've been there. I, I live in this area. I go there, I get my car washed at Jet Splash and try to get across that street. It's not easy, and I, and I'm, I'm glad to hear that there's going to be a, a signal study there. I, I was afraid that maybe it was a little too close to, to Pine Lake to get one, but if, if that's the case...
Been decored to the quarter mile.
I think it's, I think it's really a good idea. And again, the, the parking, there was a, a comment made about 188 versus 200. I, I think our sheet showed 200. We had an earlier sheet that was shown at the neighborhood meeting that said 188. There's a little flex in there, just like there is flex in the size of these units at the moment because the building hasn't been designed. But that flex is for things like providing ADA parking, and there will be like a carwash bay in the basement of the, of the, in the garage, and a few things like that that make that number a little bit squishy at the moment. But it's, all of the required parking, and probably a little more than required, will be in the garage, and all of the guest parking will be surface parking. And if there's any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Go ahead.
Maybe can address construction and, and traffic flow?
Sorry. Yes, I meant to do, I meant to do that. Yes, we can build into the specs when we bid, when we bid the building, that construction traffic will use routes that we prescribe. We don't want to see any, we don't want to see any concrete trucks going down private roadways. And if you look at that, where that, particularly the, the Old Creek Road, it would be unlikely for them to use that anyway, but we will definitely restrict where they, where they go and keep them onto the, the streets that are nearby and, and get them out to the arterial as quickly as possible. We don't want anybody driving through residential streets if they, if they don't have to.
The other comment that we heard was on drainage, and I understand that's in the process, but if you could speak to...
We, the site, I don't think we brought a site plan that shows this, but we've, we've expect, we expect there to be a detention cell on the north side of the building between Madonna and, and the, the apartment building, which will accommodate all the drainage from the site. But again, we are subject to review by the, by LTU to, to meet all those design standards for grading and drainage, and we will. Basically, the standard is, just so you know, that your runoff cannot exceed essentially what's there today. I mean, you have to capture and slowly release all the excess runoff that is created by your project.
All right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would move that we'd close the public hearing.
Second, Joy.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
By?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Public hearing closed.
And I would move that we approve Special Permit 1713D.
Second, Joy.
Discussion.
I have a real problem with the height that's going to be there, but they meet all the requirements within our rules. And our job is to look at, is this proper zoning? And it's proper zoning. So I don't think we can deny their, their request. I would just urge that they work to get the profile of the building as, as low as possible to fit better with the rest of the neighborhood in that area.
Yeah, I would agree, Dick. I appreciate all the people who came to speak today, and I, I do hope on the issues that you brought up with traffic flow and roundabouts and lights not being long enough and erosion issues, that you still continue to talk with the planning department, talk with LTU, because I do think that they do want to help you and problem solve. And so I, I truly believe that this project is going to be good for that neighborhood, especially with, in walking distance to commercial and restaurants and things like that.
Additional comments?
And I've said this before, driving around Lincoln, some of the apartment buildings that are going up are ugly as sin. No architectural features, and I trust that you will make this as appealing and aesthetic as you can to fit in with the neighborhood.
I want to make sure neighbors understand, we do read all of the things that we receive before the meeting and appreciate the comments that people brought forward today, and I hope those concerns have been addressed in some part by the conversation with both the staff and the applicant. I will be supporting this, as Commissioner Campbell said, it does meet the zoning requirements, and I think can add some good infill opportunities in a different level of multifamily residential than we currently have in that part of town.
All right. Shelley?
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Joy.
Yes.
Rodenberg.
Yes.
Reiman Yost.
Yes.
Approved six to zero.
Okay, next item, item 4.3, county special permit 24020, to allow for the Blue Stem Acres AG Community Unit Plan to allow six single-family dwelling units on property generally located at West Martel Road and Southwest 56, Southwest 54th Street. This is final action. Are there any expedite communications to be disclosed on this application?
No.
Are there any expedite communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting any of this site to be disclosed?
No.
Good afternoon, George Wesselhoff, Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. So, this project, the Blue Stem Acres CUP Community Unit Plan, is located in the southwest part of Lancaster County. We're approximately a half mile west of Southwest 42nd Street on the north side of West Martel Road, adjacent to the Blue Stem State Recreational Area. And the proposal is for six acreage lots that will range in size from three to five acres. This is the overall plan. I'll show a zoomed-in map here momentarily. But the six lots are in the southwest part of the site. There's an existing agricultural barn, if you've been out to the location on West Martel Road. And so, those lots will be located to the north and northwest of that existing barn. They will be accessed by a private roadway, which will be Southwest 54th Street. That will run north-south. There'll also be an east-west private roadway. West Martel Road is a public roadway, which is gravel. One of the unique aspects of this project was the adjacency to the state recreational area and the hunting aspects that occur on that property. And long before the applicant submitted the application to the planning department, they had discussions with the Nebraska Game and Parks Commission. Specifically, there's a law in the state of Nebraska that prohibits hunting with rifles within 600 feet of an occupied dwelling and prohibits hunting with shotguns and bow hunting within 300 feet of an occupied dwelling. So, there were discussions about that and how to balance the interests of the hunting versus the interests of the private property owner and their rights to develop. And so, what is proposed is the incorporation of a 300-foot setback from the property line of the Blue Stem Recreation Area that would prohibit dwelling within that 300-foot setback area. I have additional site map here that kind of shows an area, part of that line that's shown as a setback on the plan specific to that concern. There also is a future trail identified in the comprehensive plan for this area. At this time, there are no plans or funds identified for that trail. So, what the plan does, it incorporates, the CUP plan incorporates a proposed location for future trail, which will be on the west side of the private roadway and will ultimately connect to the north-northwest part of the site, where then it will go off to the adjoining private property to the north. So, as is required with any community unit plan like this, there is a well groundwater requirement that's required. They did provide a well data analysis that included information on six registered wells that are within the vicinity of the proposed CUP, and this is a requirement. The groundwater analysis indicated that the water supply is adequate, and so, the Health Department waived the test well requirement based on that analysis. Also, another agency, the Lower Platte NRD, noted in their review that the geology and groundwater aquifer supplies near Blue Stem Lake appear to be able to support household water usage. So, with that, I will conclude my presentation. I will note that we do have a representative here today from Nebraska Game and Parks Commission. If there's any questions of the hunting aspects, Pat Molyneux is here from that agency today.
Thank you. Any questions at this time? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just money from the applicant.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Anne Post. I'm an attorney with Rembleau-Ludkey. I'm here on behalf of the applicant Everest, sorry, Everett Family Farms LLC. Here today in support of the, this agricultural CUP. As Mr. Wesselhoff went over the details of this CUP, generally, this is an ag CUP, as you are aware. In agricultural zoning, there is a density allowance of one dwelling per 20 acres. The policy of the agricultural CUP is to condense that density into one space and to, really to condense it for efficiency of providing the infrastructure, to preserve an overall density requirement, also preserve a larger area of open agricultural space. So, this accomplishes that by allowing six acreage residential lots. You will see that they are clustered on the west side of the development with lots one, two, three, four, five, and six, right there. They're clustered on the west side to take advantage of that proximity to the Blue Stem Lake recreational area. I will note, one question we got with the initial site plan is, what is this outlot? That is unique. We certainly would have preferred to consolidate that open space a little bit more. What that was is that once we worked in this 300-foot setback, you see the line there, you'll notice there's not much buildable space left in that area. And so, that's why there's two separate outlots that preserve open space and why we have that configuration. So, while we have consolidated, we've clustered those acreage lots on the west side of the development to take advantage of that open space being next to Blue Stem Recreation Area. That also presented the challenge with the impacts of having this residential development next to the state recreational area. As was stated, at this recreational area host hiking trails, that host picnicking grounds, boating, camping, camping and several other recreational uses. In fact, I wanted to know, if you look, here is the, again, this is the site plan. This is the, this is the entire lot without the site plan on it. Here's the Blue Stem Lake recreational area. In fact, this is a tent campground right next, right next to the area. So, you will also note that there are several other acreage developments here and three acreage lots here that are right up next against the Blue Stem Lake recreational area. I apologize that those lot lines are a little hard to see on this map. But anyway. All right. So, when we first initially proposed this development, as Mr. Wesselhoff said, we, in our initial meetings with planning department, this area of a setback was raised. Upon looking at the other developments in the area, our investigation had shown that, yes, this is an issue that had been consistently raised by the Nebraska Game and Parks Division, Department, Commission, I apologize. Anyway, that had, that had been consistently raised, also that the Commission was consistently, had shown a willingness to work with applicants to agree to what is larger than the typical setback, but maybe less than that 600-foot setback. So, with that, history is where we initiated conversations. I got to meet with Mr. Molyneux to talk about the Nebraska Game and Parks Commission's concerns and the impact on hunting. Really, the basis of those conversations were, again, that first to step back is that there is no requirement for an increased setback in, that while there is no requirement under Lancaster County zoning code, that there is no requirement, and so therefore, there has been those agreements for setbacks. But at the same time, the CUP does look to the impact on neighboring property owners, and we want it to be a good neighbor. So, with that is where we had the conversations to identify the Commission's interest in promoting hunting in the state, promoting that as a recreational pastime, also using it as an effective means of population control for certain wildlife in the area, as mentioned, especially whitetail deer. And so, being able to really balance the interests of promoting, of still allowing those interests, but also recognizing that this is in a more densely populated area of the state. This is next to a campground and an area where we expect people to recreate. There are several new acreage lots that have been developed in the area. And so, really to balance, balance those interests. And that's where the applicant proposed this 300-feet setback, which will still allow hunting in the area, but will limit hunting to the, to shotgun hunting, to bow hunting, to those, using those implements that have a shorter range than rifle hunting. So, we're able to work with and propose that compromise. Our last communication, when we last discussed was that Nebraska Game and Parks did not oppose, was not going to oppose this project based on that, that compromise. All right. And then, so finally, I wanted to discuss, as Mr. Wess, again, as Mr. Wesselhoff discussed with this application, this does show a location for a future trail. So, as stated, this area is obviously well outside city limits. It's well outside any current existing or planned connection to Lincoln's Trail Network. However, it is identified as a place for a future trail. And so, that's where what is shown on the CUP is a planned location. The purpose of that is to give the neighbors, or to give the people who buy property in this development notice that there could be a trail in the future. At the same time, that's going to be subject to future planning, future funding, to the acquisition of, of the right-of-way or easements for that trail in the future. This CUP does not dedicate any of that right-of-way or an easement for that. So, with that, we appreciate your consideration or requesting support and are happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Here's not at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This time, we'll take testimony in support of this application. Is there anyone here who wishes to testify in a neutral position or any testimony in opposition? All right, do we have any questions for staff? Okay, and I don't think we need any applicant rebuttal, but it is on the agenda. Should you need additional time?
I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second, Joy.
Campbell.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Fight.
Yes.
Joy.
Yes.
Rodenberg.
Yes.
Reiman Yost.
Yes.
Public hearing closed.
And I would move that we approve county special permit 24020.
Second, Joy.
Discussion.
I think they've done their homework. I think it's laid out nicely, and it still allows the agricultural use to work through. So, they've met all the requirements and have thought about the recreational area in their development. So, I'll be supporting it.
And I'm thankful that they have accommodated for the future trail. That's important.
And working through with the hunting, that was very important. So, thank you.
No, it's a great partnership, and guessing it won't take long for people to want to jump on those lots. All right. Shelley.
Campbell.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Fight.
Yes.
Joy.
Yes.
Rodenberg.
Yes.
Reiman Yost.
Yes.
Approved six to zero.
Item 4.4, preliminary plat 24003, to amend preliminary plat number 95022 by reducing the number of lots by 17 lots and to change the proposed layout of Aylesworth Avenue so that it ends in a cul-de-sac as Aylesworth Circle on property generally located at the northwest corner of the intersection of North 80th Street and Holdridge Street. This is final action. Are there any expedite communications to be disclosed on this application?
Emma Martin, 555 South 10th Street. This is a request for a full amendment to preliminary plat 95022 to amend the layout of the existing preliminary plat, and it includes a waiver to block length over property that is generally located at North 80th Street and Holdridge Street. This amendment will modify the existing proposed lot layout. Oh, excuse me. The amendment will reconfigure the existing proposed lot layout that is shown in the, in preliminary plat 95022, as well as, excuse me, as well as request a waiver to block length. As you can see, the current layout has Aylesworth Avenue going from, extending from North 70th Street to North 80th Street. And, excuse me. Excuse me. So, the amendment will reconfigure the proposed extension of Aylesworth Avenue, and instead of extending east to connect to North 80th Street, the amendment proposes that Aylesworth Avenue end in a cul-de-sac at Aylesworth Circle. The block length waiver is being requested under Lincoln Municipal Code, section 26.23.130. That section requires that block lengths not exceed 1,320 feet except where a major street, school, park, or other man-made barrier, lake, or other natural barrier forms one boundary of a block. The proposal to change Aylesworth Avenue to Aylesworth Circle will extend the overall block length to approximately 2,423 feet. As there is no major street, school, park, or other man-made barrier or a natural barrier forming one boundary of the block, in the circumstance, the requested, the planning department is recommending that the requested waiver be denied. While the reconfiguration of the lots is consistent with the comprehensive plan, the request for a waiver is not, and does not meet the waiver requirements. And the, so, and as part of their application, the owners of the site, which is a capital Christian, capital city Christian church, excuse me, has noted that they would like to change the layout to create an essence of seclusion by limiting traffic that will travel through the street. And the applicant also notes that the church has no intention of selling their property as they plan to use it for their parking needs. It is currently used as part of their parking lot. However, seclusion and limiting traffic are not justifications for a waiver to block length as laid out by 26.23.130. And the city of Lincoln has seen many places of religious assembly relocate or be redeveloped. And this Aylesworth extension will only occur if development, if or when development starts. The church, if the church does not wish to have this development, they are not required to develop their property. This planning department and the city are not requiring this extension today. It would be part of a future redevelopment if this property is sold off and developed into single-family lots or into residential lots, excuse me.
And just for visual, can you go back to like the, I don't know, where it shows the church and it shows the, like, the current layout of what's there right now in the city? Thank you. So, they're hoping this, yeah, help, help me out here.
So, yeah, so Aylesworth Avenue would extend and have a slight curve from Aylesworth all the way to North 80th Street.
And that's what you're proposing they need to show rather than the cul-de-sac?
Rather than the cul-de-sac. So, and on the preliminary plat that exists today, you can see as we're going from, connecting to North 80th Street. And this is the proposed amendment ending in a cul-de-sac, and here is North 80th Street.
And what is, is that the trail, a pedestrian walkway?
This would be a pedestrian easement, yes.
Thank you.
All right, so it doesn't provide another act-
So, it doesn't provide another access point for like emergency vehicles? There's just the one, right?
Correct.
If it was in the way that it's being proposed, it would not-
There would not be an additional access off of North 80th Street, no.
Testimony from the applicant, please.
Good afternoon. Rick Anon with E&amp;A Consulting, 2077 N Street. Yes, for a little bit of history and background on why this amendment is coming forward. So, the, Capitol City Christian Church has been in this location for over 50 years. It predates the Northern Lights subdivision that surrounds it. As the subdivision developed in the early 90s, I believe, they decided to purchase some additional ground. So, their original property was, was this rectangular piece here. As that subdivision developed, they purchased what's yet highlighted in yellow on this sheet here. In fact, I mean, it was, it was graded for the lots as shown on the preliminary plat when they bought it and then had, had some regrading done. As I understand, part of their intent when they bought that is that the area east of their facility, they were planning to build soccer field that would be available to the community. Part of that plan included a well. They irrigated it and they couldn't find water. So, that didn't quite turn out the way they had hoped. The, the intent of, or the thing that's driving this change today is that they have approached the developer or have been approached about developing the lots that front to North 80th Street. That infrastructure is in place. When 80th Street was built, all the sewer laterals were extended. And so, it's a, it's a fairly straightforward development. It's a property that's, that there feels access to their operations today. The, the difference, I guess, that would be between this plan and what was originally improved is, again, the extension of Aylesworth Avenue through to 80th Street. That doesn't seem like, I mean, it surfaced much of a difference, but if we consider that we had to accommodate Aylesworth to go through in the future, that's one less lot that is sellable to somebody that's trying to develop it. It would also mean that the frontage of that street, that the lots abut it, would have to be built and the other infrastructure, water sewer, storm sewer would have to be installed at a fairly substantial cost to something that will probably never be needed. So, at this point, as we're asking that the amendment be approved with the waiver as it was originally proposed, again, it is not the church's intent to develop all of this area. They would sell off to a developer, the ability to develop these lots that are highlighted in yellow. The green is simply something the planning department insisted that we show them since it was part of, since there was a street through there in the original preliminary From a development standpoint, it's, it's unlikely that that cul-de-sac would ever get built for several reasons. One, it impacts the church's existing parking facility. Their, their existing building that they've added on to since, since they bought that extends into what was the originally part of this subdivision. And in order to make that work, you would have to build a single-loaded street, so you're only getting the benefit of the sales from one side of the street, but all the cost that goes with it. So, the likelihood that that street would ever get built is, is pretty slim. The planning department's justification, I guess, for not supporting the waiver is, is a comment that they say, well, churches tend to sell off ground on time. I, I don't know if that's a justifiable explanation, but that's the one that they've used. If we use that explanation, we can certainly point to commercial uses or other uses that are similar to that. Quite frankly, if we think of our partners at LPS, most every subdivision that I've done that's had a school in it, they end up trading it with somebody else and they redevelop the property internally. So, it's not a whole lot different. Again, this, this church has been here for 50 years, has no intention of going anywhere. So, it's not a whole lot different than a school, I would, I would argue. So, I think that's provided, yeah, I guess the only other thought that I would had, if, if this, if the church would determine that it is no longer going to be in this location, the logical next step would be that this entire area would be developed in a completely different configuration that was shown on the original preliminary plat with access to Holdridge Street and Fairview Avenue and Aylesworth.
Can you leave that there? Between nine and 10, right there? Is there, is there a reason why Aylesworth can't go in between number nine and 10?
There's drainage area there and some wetlands. Yes.
And the green area, if it were to be built, it's still only one side loaded.
Correct.
So, that wouldn't change anything from what the city was proposing, correct?
Right. The only thing it changes that, is that Aylesworth doesn't connect through to 80th Street.
Right. But it also reduces the lots that could be-
Number of lots that could be developed, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, we will take testimony in support of this application. Anyone here in support? All right. And a neutral test, neutral position? Okay.
I'm not sure if this is neutral, support or against. This is the first time I've done this. It's been very interesting.
So, start with your name and address.
Okay. My name's George Teachman. I'm at 7901 Yellowknife, which is right across the, wow, there's a house between me and this.
Yellowknife, yeah. Oh, Yellowknife, got it.
The only issue I had with this is lot number 10. If you look at the Soil Survey, I'm a retired soil scientist, worked for NRCS for 42 years. Did a lot of mapping. There it is. Now, this says, it comes on automatically? Is that what I heard?
Yeah. Just takes a second. Okay, here we go.
All right. Lot number 10 is up in here. You can't see it on here. This is from Web Soil Survey. I'm hoping that you guys have all heard of this, and we spent a lot of money, a lot of time making sure you did. But this map unit here is considered frequently flooded, which is where lot number 10 is. Now, the soil survey was done prior to the development of Northern Lights. And the, the cities, or this previous, oh, here, shows that this is, I don't know what creek that is, but it's a, it's a, it's a white one and it's a floodplain. And the floodplain, actually, I've seen a map. I don't have it, but it shows it coming up in here. And I did a little soil survey of my, of my own the other day, and behind here, it's all wet. Now, the houses aren't going to go there. I'm sure that they were going to be the backyards. But it's, it's still, water will come up here in the, in the unlikely event of a big storm like we had, what, several years ago? So, my only concern was lot number 10.
Week.
That and the opportunity to be here. I'm, I'm retired, so I couldn't do this before because it gives me an opportunity to see from the other side.
All right. Thank you for that information. Does anybody have any questions?
Just to clarify, that's like, it's that lot 10 that you're super concerned about?
Yeah, lot 10, I was just-
Okay, great.
I should have talked to the engineers or A&E beforehand to raise my questions, but-
That's wonderful.
This was an opportunity.
Can they build that lot up and take it out of where it would get flooded?
They can fill it.
Yeah.
That lot, lot 10, the way it looks on, on, on the map, it looks like it's taken out a half of, half of this, this guy's backyard anyway.
Yeah.
So, I don't know whether he owns that or not, but this is, this is going to be a wetland.
Yeah.
And that core engineers has things to say about wetlands that NRCS doesn't always agree with, but that's the way it is. And the other two exits are also wetlands, so other than that, it's pretty good.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Additional testimony that is neutral or testimony in opposition?
I'm neutral.
Go ahead, neutral. We're still in neutral, but often we don't have neutral, so.
Very neutral. Hello, my name is Eric Hoke. I'm at 7901 Yellowknife Drive, which my, if I can put this down and show you. Okay, so, I am right here. This is my backyard. Capital City churches have just done amazing. They're wonderful people. They'll do anything for anybody. I try to watch the church when everything goes on. I'm, I'm with my neighbor George. When the water, you have to understand too, this hill pitches down towards the, I mean, it's, it's not flat. It goes downhill. So, any of my runoff or any of the runoff from Aylesworth does go right through our backyard and heads right down to this area too. So, I mean, I'm sure they could build it up, but I'm not complaining or anything, but whoever would buy number 10, you know, just have to be careful. I know the neighbor right here, I'm sure his sump pump runs quite a bit because of all the drainage, so that's it. But no, this, I, I love this right here. I think this would be great for the community, plus, you know, I, I'm not a big fan of going through, but, but I'm approving that. I just want to be careful that they, they know to unplug 10, that's it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Any additional testimony in a neutral position? All right. Let's have any testimony in opposition. Okay, staff questions?
Yes. All right. Go right ahead. Oh, my gosh. So, it shows that that whole area is R3?
Yes.
So, what else could be built in that area if it wasn't a church and housing?
Oh, the top of my head, it's a residential zone, so it's generally residential. If anything else wants to go in there, they likely need special permit. Is there something specific you were-
No, I was just wondering process. That, that answers that question.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. That's a great, great answer. And then, the question on that drainage way, when I, when, as we do site visits and do that driving through, we have the floodway and the floodplain shown in that public way, but does it all drain to a pipe underneath? I didn't get out of my vehicle.
I think Bob Simmering would, no? Oh. Yeah, so Bob.
And Bob's like, I'm not answering that question. He doesn't want to be put on the spot.
Oh, okay. So, sorry. So, sorry.
I'm just, I didn't get, I should have got out of the car.
Bob Simmering, LTU, 555 South 10th. I don't know.
Thanks, Bob. I don't know either. That, thank you.
All right. Additional staff questions? Anyone else? Bailey, do you have anything?
I don't know what to ask, so figure out.
All right. After hearing testimony, is there anything else you wanted to add? I'll just say that.
Um, yes, well, just a note that every street does reduce block length. And so, any street that's put in is going to, sorry, reduce, not block length, the number of homes that you're going to be able to put, and, and streets do reduce block length as well. And as an additional note, the reason that, excuse me, I got my papers out of order. The reason that the planning department requested that the, there we go, that this change be shown when this was being amended is because on the existing preliminary plat, as you can see, Aylesworth stubs into North 80th Street. By, with the new layout or the proposed layout, excuse me, there is no stub point for Aylesworth Avenue. So, it was needed to show, how are you going to reconfigure that? Where will Aylesworth Avenue go? So, that is why this needs, needed to be shown. Without that stub, you know, in the future, when Aylesworth Avenue is then extended, there's nowhere for it to go, except for into somebody's house, which, so.
Thank you. Applicant rebuttal?
Just a couple of things. I think it's just important to point out again that the church was not included as part of this original preliminary plat, and thus, it was not accounted for from that standpoint. From a block length standpoint, one could argue that the existing plat has a block length issue because of the church, even the preliminary plat, because of this block. There's no access, there's no, there's no planned access through the church property. So, there's essentially a block length issue already in place under that preliminary plat. We're not making it, we're not, not creating it, or maybe changing it a little. In regards to the comments on lot 10, that plat, or that lot again, was part of the original plat. There is a low point there. There is a storm sewer that stubs out, maybe you can see it on this plan. There's a storm sewer that stubs out, picks up that drainage area. There would be a restriction on that lot as to the lowest opening elevation and so that water could overtop the road if it need to before it got into somebody's house.
Got it. That answers that.
Guess that's all I got. If there's other questions.
Other questions? All right. Yep. Thank you very much.
I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second, Joy.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Fight?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Public hearing closed.
And I would move that we approve preliminary plat 24003.
Second, Joy.
Discussion.
Yeah. My, my reason behind it is the church has been there for 50 years and that, the green part that they were showing, the church, at least at this point in time, doesn't intend to develop that. And it, in honesty, it would not make any sense to develop it even in the future because it's only got lots loaded on one side. So, their ability to recoup any additional monies would be very minimal. And so, I can see selling off those, those 10 lots or whatever it is, but otherwise, I think it'll remain church property.
Sorry, we have a comment from, because we have an issue with the conditions, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yep.
Steve Hendrickson with the Planning Department. So, Dick, if you're wishing to approve it with a waiver, Rick Onan didn't provide the language, so we'll, we'll provide it here quick. So what you would need to do is, the staff report does not approve the waiver.
Great.
So what I suggest is that you're now making a motion to amend, and it would have two parts. The first would be in Condition 1.1, to strike, basically, the first sentence. Revised the preliminary platte to show Aylesworth Avenue extended as required by the section. So you'd be striking that, and then up in the part that says, I probably just have a general comment then, that this also waives, I said general comment, it would be part of the conditions of approval to waive the block length requirement of 26.23.130. That's the number in that first sentence, so, two parts.
Both of those would be included in my motion.
There we go.
Second, Joy to the amendment.
Okay, so now that the amendment has been accepted, I want to make sure that we have it recorded as stated.
Thanks, Steve.
You bet.
Okay, now we have an amended motion, and it has been moved and seconded.
So first we vote on the amendment, is that what, or discussion on the amendment? Is that what you're asking us?
He just amended his, amended the motion.
So we're good.
Right? Can we amend the motion, or do we need to vote on the amendment first?
Tim C., Assistant City Attorney. I think it's fairly clear what you're voting on right now is the staff report with the amendments as Commissioner Campbell has proposed, that being the waiver for the block length and the, and the issue with regard to extending Aylesworth. So as long as everyone's on the commission is clear, I don't know that we need to go back and do motions to amend. I think it's clear in the main motion what we're talking about.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. C. Perfect. All right, Shelley?
All right, Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Fight?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Approved, six to zero.
At this time, anyone who is wishing to speak on an item that is not on today's agenda may do so. All right, I would accept a motion.
Seeing none, I move we adjourn.
Second, Joy.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Fight?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
We are adjourned.